To workshop number two for discussion of the proposed 2026 city budget. And at this time, I'll turn over the discussion to city manager Fonda Crohman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Originally, this meeting was supposed to be to review water and sewer funds and rates and expenditures. But some, I'll wait one second. You sure? But yesterday in the afternoon, I received some information that I need to share with council as it affects the budget. I have forwarded a briefing memorandum to each member of council along with the PowerPoint presentation. If you were fortunate enough to take a look at that ahead of time, that'll give you some context. But understand that that is there for you to review. So if you want to follow along in the PowerPoint on slide two, that I think the headline pretty much says it all and certainly talks about my frustration here. Excuse me. When things are too good to be true, heck yeah, they usually are, especially when it comes to the finances of the city of Augsburg. And $30 million in exempt parcels were calculated in the taxable assessment realm. And you can see the chart on the left hand side is a similar chart that I provided for council in my briefing last week, where we touted the fact that $39 million in additional valuation helped bring the tax rate down to $14.15. Subsequent to my public presentation of that number and those numbers, I came to my attention that our valuation number was inflated by $30 million. The memorandum goes into some detail and identifies some of the reasons why that happened. I think there's no real reason to hash that up in this meeting. Those are for corrections for me to make from an operational standpoint. But effectively, what it does is it takes the levy number that is in the recommended budget and translates into a $15.35 tax rate as opposed to the $14.15. So a reduction, but nowhere near a reduction that we were touting, what I was leveraging as a strategy for the recommended budget. Again, there is a 34 cent decrease in the tax rate from 2025 to 2026. When you correct for that $30 million in exempt parcels. But nevertheless, not the number we thought we were working with. And it can cause some problems strategically as we move forward. Before I go to the next slide, I wanted to pause and see if anybody had any questions on that.
Is there a specific piece?
There were a number of pieces of property, obviously, that added up to $30 million. It was, it actually is the hospital properties, Glaxton Hepburn. They did not file their exemption paperwork by the April 1 deadline. As a matter of fact, they, they only brought that paperwork with them to grievance day, as I understand it. And that was part of the problem. It is certainly not an excuse. I take full responsibility for any mistake that happens in city operations. So, you know, the fault is, is our processes, although we didn't get help from the potential taxpayer, that's for sure. If you want to move, sorry. You sure? If you want to move on to slide three, what I did here was try to do the comparison of what the different rate means. And if you recall, on the left hand side, this is a figure I included in the PowerPoint from last week, touting the difference in savings for the levy from one year to the next, and then comparing that and adding in the cost of the water sewer that's in the recommended budget. And for most parcels there, there was a net savings for the cost of city government to our residents and taxpayers. If we look on the right hand side, as you can see, there is little, if any, net savings when you take cost of property tax increase or decrease, plus the increase in the water sewer. So on the left hand side, there were a few home valuations where it would cost a few dollars, but that cost is minimal in the grand scheme, although every dollar is a dollar, I get that. But on the right hand side with the corrected tax rate, there are no net savings. And you can see the cost anywhere from $54 all the way up to $102. So the strategy does not hold as I originally anticipated for. So on slide four, this is an error and every error can be corrected. It's unfortunate, it will not happen again. We will put safeguards and checks and balances in place. I am none too pleased, if you could tell by the tone of my voice, that I presented to council a number that is incorrect, that does not happen with me. But my job is to solve problems, not create more problems. And so I'm thankful for the controller. She and I spent a lot of quality time together last evening, both in the office and in our respective homes, trying to come up with some options and some levers to pull to, to give to council today. So this chart basically does a quick summary of four different options. We'll get into the details of the options and as deep as you want to get into them, we will. As you can see, in all of the options, we will change the levy basically as whatever tax rate council wants to move through. And I've provided, you know, some of the information that might be helpful at a glance for you to know exactly what each option means and what the C T L and the tax rate decreases and all that important information goes. So option one is kind of the do nothing option. You leave the tax rate where it should have been in the proper calculation of $15.35. You can see the levy there is unchanged at that $5.6 million. That's a tax rate decrease of 34 cents over prior year and a C T L of about 83 and a half percent. So that is an option. Option two is a reduction in the levy by around $117,000, which was kind of my magic number last year when I talked to council and said, you know, over the next five years, if we want to reduce our C T L, $117,000 incrementally every year would get you where you need to be. So utilizing that as the benchmark, that takes your tax rate to $15.03, which is a 66 cent reduction year over year, brings the levy down obviously by just under $117,000 and the C T L slightly under 82%. Option three cuts more. What it does is it takes the midpoint tax rate from the 1450 that I touted and finds the midpoint between that number and the actual tax rate, which is $15.35. That calculates to be $14.75. It asks for a levy reduction of about $219,000, which is a tax rate decrease of 94 cents year over year and just over 80% on the C T L. Option four is incredibly invasive. It asks for a levy decrease of $438,000, but that gets you to that $14.15 tax rate that we talked about in the recommended budget. It's a $1.54 decrease in the rate and gives you a C T L of 77%. So those are some of the options. Obviously, this is mix and match. It's all a preference of what council wants to do. And then the management team will execute whatever guidance we get from, from council. If we move forward to the next slide, my recommended approach is for council to determine kind of where they want the tax rate and the levy, perhaps utilizing one of the four options we, we put in front of you or maybe a different option, a hybrid option is certainly fine. We certainly would ask council to look at some of the recommended line by lines because we have them here and how to get to each of those levy amounts, accept, reject, mix and match, propose different modifications to get to the numbers that we need to. And we're certainly willing to and will take any final decisions or any suggested decisions from council and incorporate them into an appropriate resolution for the preliminary budget. And on slide six is our detail. So controller and I went through, we knew what our threshold cuts were going to be for the different options. Obviously, option one didn't have any cuts. It keeps the levy the same and just incorporates the corrected tax rate. But in option two, you can see all of those different changes and appropriations to get to that $116,808. Option three takes options, twos cuts and adds to them to get to the $219,000 number. Then obviously, option four is even more, more, more of the same, more of cuts, takes options two and three and some additional things. I will say option four is obviously the most disruptive to operations. Option four took all of the enhancements and backed them out and took some, some calculated risks from the revenue side of things to get to that number. That's a hard number to get to, but I thought I owed it to council to get to that $14.15 tax rate, should council want to get there. So with that, I, we will talk about water and sewer, but I figured this was the elephant in the room. And so we needed to at least get this out there and start the conversation.
I like the suggestions. Thank you, Fonda. And not to limit discussion tonight, but I'm not sure that all of us have had the chance to read the detailed narrative that was provided with this PowerPoint presentation. So while we might ask questions again about what happened or about some of the items listed in various options, I would suggest that we wait until at least Monday night's meeting before we explore actual options that we might consider for revision if we do elect to revise the current proposed budget.
I agree.
That is scheduled. We're beating the question. We can discuss it. We got to make a final decision. Where we want to go. If you have thoughts about it, I think we need to throw that out.
Okay.
So I'll let you start.
I'll start. I think options four are really responsible. Well, I think they can cut that down now. Sorry, I need to say something.
Can you move your microphone maybe a little closer?
Bring the tax rate down.
Do use your microphone more than you don't.
The one that brings the tax rate down to what you originally proposed, I think, I think the cuts are just too deep. Option two is good. I can live with option three. I hate to see celebrations cut completely out of it. Maybe we can save a little bit by having that. And I'm a little bit weary about cutting, option two, cutting the reserves down to zero or something. So I guess what I'm looking at is somewhere between option two and option three is my preferred, my preferred path. You know, I'd like to say we cut it back to what we were promised, but I just don't see how that, taking all that stuff out of option four is how that's feasible or responsible thing to do. My opinion.
Right? Anyone else?
Just a couple of questions. You mentioned an option two, potential trade offs. Can you elaborate on that?
Sure. So obviously, when you reserve contingency, you are trying to predict what is going to happen in the future that you can't predict. So that gives you a little less financial flexibility. Certainly, the transfer to reserve is a big trade off, right? We know what our capital costs are in the future. And although $50,000 was nowhere near enough, it certainly was something as opposed to nothing. So that's, that's some of the trade offs from the operational side of things.
I'm sorry, just on the contingency aspect. And I apologize, that's what I'm going to ask.
Sure, yeah.
I know we spoke a lot about it over the course of last year, related to the contingency and some of the things that we're going to need down the road. Is there anything in there out of that $50,000 that changed that you may have highlighted that we might be looking at next fiscal year? As far as putting some investment into it?
So that the contingency account was made up of $88,000 in, in just general, who knows what's going to happen? So we want to have a little bit of something to go on to. $50,800 for, remember, we talked about the pool, the pool operations. We weren't going to have pool operations, but we slid those cost dollars into the contingency. So they're automatically budgeted for next year. We had $30,000 in there because of a question mark on somebody's health insurance who had a buyout, might go to family. So that's the, that's the basic makeup of that. So that $50,000 net decrease is either saying we're going to cut down what our question mark money is in case something were to happen or to basically eliminate the pool, you know, that pool contingency. It doesn't matter at that point, which of the two or a combination thereof, that's kind of where that comes from.
For the pool aspect, you're referring to what we discussed the other night?
No. So the pool costs X number of dollars to run. The pool is not, you know, the pool is not running next year. But if we just zero out those costs, then obviously there's a savings to the levy. But next year, you have to re levy it. It almost is a built in tax increase. So just to keep things steady and you can always use a little extra cushion in the contingency. It just made sense to me to take those dollars and put them over. Thank you.
I'd like to say that I think that we had a bare bone budget when we were coming in with what we had. I'm, but I would like to have, I did read the email in depth this afternoon, but really to digest it all and to look at all the options, I'd like to have a little time, as the mayor recommended, before we make a decision because there might be a hybrid between option three and option four that might bring us part of the way in between the two, which would even be better. As our citizens are, they were very pleased with that 14.5 and now we're raising that. So I appreciate the option details, but I'd like to look at this and see maybe there's a hybrid here that will be worked out.
Thank you.
You know, I didn't have a chance to read the email, you know. At first glance, I don't want to reduce services. There'll be a lot of complaints on that as much as we can. Option two is something that initially support. And if Storm suggests something between option two and three, I certainly want to look at that. I don't, I want to be as damaging as possible on services and the following year's budget. Starting on the internet, added in again, just to turn around, raise taxes, a little theory of that. Glad to see that because of the issues in Augsburg, like crime and whatnot. Looks like without the option four, I'm not even going to consider. And not sure about the other jobs or positions, but definitely do not want to test the base chart. And with option two, nice and clean, and to me, that's still a gamble. I don't want to take too much out of our fund balance either if we're considering that. But I understand the contingency, that's, that's a gamble as well because you're trying to predict the future. So at first glance, I'm supporting option two.
So just to make a quick comment, every one of these proposals was certainly considered in one way, shape or form in formulating the original recommended budget and didn't make the cut because they're riskier change than, than, you know, I was willing to, to put in. But circumstances change, the circumstances have changed. So you kind of widen the, you know, the tolerance for, for these things, so.
Okay. I was going to hold off, but I think I'm going to offer some suggestions at this point just for council to think about between now and Monday. First of all, I'm pleased that management was very proactive in giving this information to us now after having just learned about it yesterday. I'm pleased to hear that Fonda will take steps working with the department heads to put in checks and balances and then hopefully down the road, an error of this type is, doesn't occur again. Certainly is a significant impact on those originally presented to us. Having said that, and following up on my comments from the first workshop, I do think it's even more essential now to consider reduction in the tax levy. I suggested $100,000. So my preference of the options is a hybrid, I guess, with a focus on option two. What I would suggest council considers this, the last five items of option to be considered, so from the engineering consultant on down, I would prefer personally to lead the transfer reserve at $50,000. And while fitting in the, the balances, the contingency, I would suggest reducing by 5,000 instead of 50,000. So at least a $95,000 hole to fill. And from the other items listed in the other options, my suggestion would be an increase in the appropriated fund balance from $250,000 to $300,000. So an increase of $50,000 there, I still think it leaves us at the high end of Fonda's suggested range of 20 to 25% for the fund balance. I would suggest reducing heat, light and power by 30,000 as suggested in option three. And using round numbers, I would suggest an increase in the budget sales tax by 15,000. So again, just to summarize, option two, accept, make the contingency reduction 5,000, maintain the transfer to reserve of 50,000, increase sales tax revenue budget by 15,000, reduce heat, light and power by 30 and the balance absorbed by the appropriated fund balance, $50,000 increase. So something to think about, we can have further discussion about. And at the same time, you know, don't be afraid to come to the table with other, other suggestions that anyone might have. But again, me personally, my focus would be on the $117,000 number in option two, which keeps us on the path that we had hoped to stay on for five, five years consecutive reduction levy by that.
Mayor, could I ask a process question? Given that the 27th is our next meeting and that a preliminary budget should be passed by the 27th, is there a preference on council how we want to work a resolution for the, the 27th on that?
Right, so I, I guess there are one of three options. One would be to accept as the preliminary budget, the budget that has been presented to us without any change. That leaves us time in November in our meetings to make further, propose further adjustments to the budget before we approve a final budget. If, if one would be to implement these changes or others as supported by council on Monday night, so that becomes part of the preliminary budget, again, because that becomes a default budget. I'd like to think we don't have to worry about the default budget, okay? And the other would be any other changes to the preliminary budget that councils might want to make as part of the preliminary budget. So to give direction now, I guess, whether or not a resolution is needed. I think the simple path forward might be to accept the preliminary budget as presented on Monday night and use the month of November in our two meetings. Actually, the first meeting in November being one where we suggest or discuss any proposed changes to, to the budget. So management has a time to react to that before we move to make the adjustments in the second meeting in November and finalize the budget. I think that's a good path forward.
I agree.
I agree. Sounds good.
Okay, consensus of council there is Monday, Monday.
So we're looking at the 10th and the 24th.
Right, so on, on next Monday night, the resolution should be to accept the proposed budget as presented to us. The first meeting in November, we'll discuss changes such as, you know, the ones I've suggested, plus any other changes. So that hopefully the goal would be at the second meeting in November, we don't bring anything to the table that management doesn't have time to react to. Well, yeah, there would be the intention. So, so we come to consensus on the first meeting in November. Here are the changes we're willing to approve. And then as she comes forward in the second meeting, that will be reflected. Everyone comfortable with that? Okay, management, good with that?
We appreciate that guidance and Kathy thanks you because she'll be asking otherwise. So I figured I'd ask for her. And just as a point of information, a public hearing on the preliminary budget will be November 10th. So that'll be over with and you won't have to worry about that procedural item.
Any other comments or discussion on this new schedule?
One, I guess, and I think that's thoughtful and I can recognize. And Fonda, I appreciate, you know, to be extent falling on the sword, so to speak, you know, and picking up on this and bringing it to our attention in good fashion. As the mayor, the mayor said, is there anything, any penalty imposed on the lack of information that you're supposed to receive? Related to the $30 million they've ever.
None I'm aware of. The assessor is here, is there, there's no penalties for late filing of exempt paperwork, is that correct? What I will probably do myself is to communicate the city's disappointment in, in hitting some of the deadlines and encourage that the deadlines be followed a little bit more closely than grievance day.
Strongly worded letter.
It will be a medium letter because I'll run it through chat G P T. Just kidding, just kidding.
It's a joke that I just did.
No, I, I, I hear you.
It's also, it's just some level of like public embarrassment when paper reports are.
Nobody's more red in the face right now than I am. And you have my apologies for it too, because I know you'll catch some, some heck in the, in the world out there and that's on me.
Okay, so with that, move on to discussion of the water.
Sure, I have very little to talk about as far as water and sewer concerned, as far as identifying specific budget lines. We believe, the management team believes that we're pretty tight. We went into very detailed discussions on both the water and the sewer fund and, you know, what the costs of operating those are. I shared on Tuesday night and this doesn't change, that these are the two funds we can run like a business and we should run them like a business. With that said, I understand the pressures and the costs involved. So what I would point out to is a couple of just general things on the water fund. We do not appropriate any fund balance. This is a much healthier fund than our other funds. It also doesn't have very much debt service. That would probably change if we were to move forward with an upgrade to the water, the drinking water treatment plant. But for now, debt service is low. This fund does contain one third of a D P W employee, right? We have, the ask is a one F T E and it's split between the three different funds. We do allocate the insurance based on asset allocation, so it's not a third, a third, a third anymore. We do have a contingency number of just under $100,000. It's 92 and almost $93,000. And so if there's an area to, to look to reduce, that would be a, a place you could look. And we do have on your last page, that is on page, if they're in a second. It's on page 30, 57. $100,000 transferred to the water reserve, right? So that's another policy area that you can think about changing. Just if you want low hanging fruit, those are the two items that would reduce your, your cost of rate a bit. Not a ton, but a bit.
But we have identified over time some upgrades that need to happen. So is it going to be savings now and then, or impactful later? If we do have to do upgrades? That was part of our problem with the sewer upgrade, that we hadn't saved enough.
So you have a preliminary engineering report that identifies $26.9 million in upgrades necessary. And E D R was here to present that. That took a long go, but it was long enough ago. So again, $100,000 is not going to fund that all, but it's, it's our attempt at taking a fund that's in relatively good shape compared to the others and trying to put something away for those costs.
That's what I was speaking about.
I was hoping that's what it was, but I just wanted to make sure, yeah, yeah.
Any questions or comments about the water fund, proposed budget?
So the only thing that I'm against. So the only thing that I'm that I'm against, honestly, is. It is is the homeowner extra fee and I know it kept coming up, it's gone away for a little while, but I think it's going to continue to come up. I think it's going away. And I honestly, from the bottom of my heart, think. Not to. Hand her by any means, but I just don't think it's it's fair to say that. One person is using hot water because they have a business that. Without water meters, it's just an arbitrary statement and, you know, I, like I said, I I I water my gardens at night. Very adamant about that, my grass. I'd probably use more water than some of those folks, if we don't have meters. And so I don't think it's a lot of revenue coming in, if I'm not mistaken, it's. About two grand. And. And it's just something that I either want to suspend. Till we can figure something better out or just get rid of it. Until we get water meters, which is the longest way I know. But that's the only real issue that that bothers me, everything else. And I know already on record. That these four counselors say they'd like to be rid of, so I don't know where council stands on that, but something I'd like to be rid of with water.
I I think that, I'm sorry. I I think that it's a bigger subject that we could deal with right now because we've been discussing this for a long time. And I think that it isn't perfect, the situation that we have now, but we have to look at the overall. Of the business owners in the community that are paying higher rates on some things and the landlords that are paying sometimes. For rates when they maybe have four bedrooms in the entire apartment house. So I think that we will be opening more cans of worms if we just eliminated it. I spoke about having a task force to review this whole thing made up of different people of the community. And council was not in favor of that, there's no perfect solution here. But I think just eliminating it isn't going to solve the overall of the overall issue. And water meters isn't going to do that too, because there's choices with water meters with how they are metered. With that too, with ADUs, et cetera, so. I'm not happy with it right now, but I'm not prepared just to say to eliminate it without more exploration and a good plan.
Anyone else that counts?
So is Dan alone on that?
No, I I don't like it either, Dan, and and I especially don't don't like it when we're. When it, maybe I'm just, you know, picking and choosing here, but when it applies to things like daycare that are such vital services in our community that we don't have enough of in the first place. So maybe you can't differentiate between a hair salon and a and a daycare, but I'm I'm I might lean toward your precision.
Until it can be strictly enforced, I mean. We should suspend, I think we should suspend it until we can do a better job. Identifying who's paying and who isn't, if we got fifteen people that are paying at thirty dollar. I think we should suspend it until we can get a hardcore number on who's paying and who isn't.
And the other thing to think about is that if businesses grow, we have, like right now, we're losing two thousand, we'd be losing whatever you said it was, two grand, but if. Additional businesses come in and they grow. That would be potential revenue we could have had if we left it in place that we now won't. But if it's, if it's an unfair policy. Then it's an unfair policy and we should.
I think it's unfair.
I think it's unfair too.
A lot of things are unfair.
That doesn't make everything.
I think we came up with a great compromise. And that's, you know, and that's a loss of potential revenue and we just went through a, you know. Budget, you know, we're here for a budget hearing, this is official council. And, you know, we're looking at modifying. That budget to to an extent where it's going to affect the taxpayers that already have a notion out there that they're getting. A rate that is not going to be, well, could be, but. Ultimately coming down the road, you know, we've got to be. We got to be careful when we start cutting our revenue sources, especially here in the very near future and and it's a troubling aspect, the whole concept. That when it came to light, you know, we beat this ad nauseam and we've given them. We asked and we listened to them and. You know, we 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 adjusted certain things, it's not perfect, it's not going to be perfect going down the road, as Council Stevens has said, even with make meters. Because you're going to see adjustments down the road, residentially and and even commercially. You know, as as time goes on and it's just at this point in time, you know, it's probably in a popular position for. Many of the people of the city of Augsburg, but not really keen on sources of revenue or. In light of of the plight that this city's in prior to the new information.
But we shouldn't be. Shouldn't be balancing the budget on the backs of a babysitter. Or if we're going to do this, I think like Dan said, have a have a business fee, not a water fee. Business fee, you open a business in town, you pay a hundred sixty bucks, whoever it is. If everybody pays the same, doesn't matter how much water they use or not. That's fair. But if they're based on water.
No, we we had discussed this, that was an option that was brought to us and we didn't go forward with that.
Right.
And I still think that might be the best one because it's not based on water consumption of a business. Which is hard to prove.
Why was it based on water to begin with?
It's not even logical.
Makes no sense. Well, why was, what, why was it a water rate increase for these folks, like what?
It wasn't an increase, it was a catch.
But why was it water and sewer, why why wasn't it called something else, you know what I mean, like it's if it's, well, it comes in in the water.
In the water budget.
So why, why?
I think he's saying, why was there an assumption they were going to use more water?
I think originally it was established long, long time ago, it was actually like double. It's codified in the state as well. It was about twelve hundred dollars.
No one is more frustrated by this than myself. True story. I would tell you that this was my understanding of it all, it was established underwater and sewer as, because if you had a business. If John Devoe's football shoes was on Forest Street in a commercial building. You were going to pay a commercial rate.
Right.
So these people are making money at their house.
Right.
So originally they would be in the double bill, which is completely unfair. So the consensus of council was, you are making money at your house, so we're going to give you half of the residential, half of the commercial. Now, if if I was a babysitter and I decided to babysit in a commercial building, I was going to, I have to pay full total original rate.
Okay.
It has nothing to do with water consumption, that is a misconception, wholeheartedly.
Okay.
It's a service fee for water and sewer.
Okay.
Based on a business or a residential.
Correct.
But it just happened that it got labeled as. So it is conceived as.
So commercial businesses pay a commercial rate for water and sewer.
Right.
So when you have a business in your house, which you are partially using for employment, money. Originally are in double, like I said, which is unfair. But they shouldn't just go pay the residential because they're still making, I guess, is is the theory behind it. Not saying it's a perfect theory and you're right, I'm not going to catch every business because it comes down to voluntary compliance, I send them a letter and they tell me, no, I'm not doing it.
I'm not doing it.
But I I don't know. But I just want to make it clear that it has nothing to do with water, it's it's to get the water to their house.
What we need to do is we need to have a service fee. As opposed to a water fee.
Yeah.
Looking at it at least.
But then again, how do you enforce the service fee?
Well, because then it becomes clear, it's not based on water, it's it's based on a business. Advertising on Facebook, if they're advertising in the newspaper, if they're. Listed as an Airbnb with the county that they're supposed to be, things like that, so if there's other ways to do that, they file. You know, they file a DVA that shows that they have a business.
I do caution against getting rid of the. Without having something in place because what's to stop the business owner to say, why am I paying a commercial rate, I have one toilet in my business? And I have one employee, why do I have to pay, I'm definitely not using as much water as a residential. But so I, there's, it's just, it's multifaceted, you could open yourself up to other people. Once this group is satisfied, someone else may not be.
Right.
And I hope so.
Any other discussion on the water fund?
As an aside, I will be taking a look at all the city fees at some point in time through now and the end of the year, so it might be a good time to have that discussion.
All right, so next sewer fund.
Okay, we are on sewer fund, again, not a lot here. Tab, sorry, tab six. GG is the the fund designation. Point out a few things, this fund appropriates fifty thousand dollars in appropriated fund balance, which is down a hundred thousand dollars from last year. It also recognizes the our receiving of a grant, the INI grant influence and infiltration. Grant, it's a hundred thousand dollar grant, the local share of that is twenty thousand dollars, so it recognizes the hundred, a hundred thousand dollars in expenses and then. And the grant revenue of eighty thousand dollars on on top of that. Other than that, we do not set aside any money for reserves because we're pulling from appropriated fund balance, it doesn't make sense to do that. Our goal is to try and get this fund to structural balance as quickly as possible. Assuming that all of our expenses come in line, I'm hoping for next year to reduce the appropriated fund balance number from fifty thousand dollars to zero. And then the only other thing I would say in here is there's about sixty six thousand dollars. In additional testing that we didn't think we were going to have to do, but are doing, and so that is baked here into the budget already. And what the ask probably will be from management moving forward is to leave that sixty six thousand dollars in there and have it drop into reserve. Because there are going to be some required testing every, every, I think, five years, Shane, is that what that is, three or five? So anyway, there there will be some future testing and instead of having to come up with a couple of hundred thousand dollars every so often. Maybe we just establish a reserve, put the excess of a certain line or two into that and then that money's there to to protect us in the in the long run. Not only did we have lots of things to do today, but we also had a DEC inspection today, so busy day today. Scheduled though, not not because of a complaint. The annual.
Thank you, Father. Questions or comments for the city?
So when this says Ubleton Sewer IMA, that they recharge them for the fight they're in here, recharge them to treat their sewage? That is correct. Okay, yeah. Same with the psych center.
It's like a sewer dish.
Yeah. But not quite, but yeah, it's similar, yeah. It allows us to take our fixed costs and spread them over additional residents, right, the Ubleton team.
Anything else from council? All right, so I believe that completes our review of all the funds. Proposed twenty twenty six budget. And the other comments, questions from council this evening?
I hear it might be beneficial to kind of flow our ideas out to each other via our email train. We're not taking any action on anything, but just so we have an idea where we feel. Where we stand, so we don't end up having a six hour argument that's meeting, so I've been through a couple of. I agree.
Yeah, I I will send out an email detailing what I suggested this evening and that others can react to that and offer other ideas as well. Okay, so with that, that concludes our workshop for this evening, next council meeting is Monday night at six o'clock.
Thank you.